Prior to actually submitting it to you by June 1. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about the overall process, where we are on the tax rates based upon the board direction we have received, where our net resources are, where we have allocated resources throughout the organization into the different service areas, any additional resources we have proposed to meet either service area demands that we have seen decline from where they are presently, to additional services that we believe are necessary to provide to our residents, the overall fire department funding, we will identify toward you where in fact what departments did not receive exactly what they had requested, and so we will identify that to you. At this point in time, I don't believe we have received an indication from any of the chiefs that they wish to present to the board, but they do have that option available to them. Where we are in emergency medical services funding, we will talk about the budget requests from the Union County Public Schools, and then where we are in the process and where we will be going forward. I think one of the things that is important to talk about is just the amount of information that we have provided to the board, really starting in October, and as the board will recall, you had a session facilitated by Ed Gagnon back on October 31st. And that session was really utilized for the board to identify to staff as to what type of objectives did you want in having us put the budget together, and what were your goals? And so, we have tried to address all of those things that we heard at that October 31st session. We heard some concerns about where we were on the tax rate, and that was one of the discussions that you wanted to hold. We heard that you wanted to have a deeper dive as it related to each of the service areas, kind of to know what their mission was and the different things, services that we provide to our community, and we provided that information to you. We were directed to please talk about our capital program and where we should be going with respect to our capital program. So, we had in all a total of 15 sessions, and primarily, one of the things we heard from you was you wanted to start much earlier in the process than we had in prior years. And that you at least wanted on a monthly basis, an idea as to where we stood as it related to revenues and expenditures, as well as you wanted us on a monthly basis to provide you with projections as to where we thought we would be as of June 30th. So, I am not going to read to you each of the sessions, but we had a session in October, November, oops, sorry, I just went a little quicker than I was ready to go back. We also talked about in December, we had two meetings in December where we talked about human services as well as our financial results. In January, we talked about everything from our industrial park to the public works capital improvement program and all the programs they have. We talked to you about our yak and water supply. We talked about the fire districts and the ad lorm tax estimates, and also our year-end projections. In February, we provided information as it related to your sheriff's office and community services. In March, the register of deeds, we also spoke to you about the 4-H Pavilion, our compensation and classification study results. Also in March, we talked to you about the water and wastewater system development fees, which you will see again in June, the short line water extension program, well actually you will see that at your next meeting, and then preliminary findings from your fire funding consultant, and they are still working on that with additional results to come back to the board. In March 26, we talked to you about our base budget assumptions and priorities, and at that point in time, we received direction from the board to reduce our tax rate by 1.5 pennies, which was where we began as part of our budget process. On your April meetings, we talked about everything from the reappraisal process and the timeline, and the fact that you would have to do a reappraisal by 2020 based upon where we are as it relates to our actual values versus what we have them assessed at. We also provided you information on the information service, emergency services, emergency medical services, our fire departments. Also in April, you had a joint meeting with the Board of Education in which they provided you a general overview of what their budget request would be, and we did receive that budget request on, was it May 2nd or 3rd, I believe it was?
It was, I think it was two days after that meeting.
Then on May 7th, your most recent meeting, we talked to you about the capital improvement program, and at that particular board meeting, we were directed to cut the tax rate by an additional penny for a total of 2.5 cents. And then the meeting today, to talk to you about an overview of what is contained within the manager's recommended budget. I think the important point to take away, and Mr. Gates will be talking about this in a little bit more detail when he comes up here, is the fact that through this budget process, we have tried to ensure that the board was very well aware of the services that we provide to our residents and where we saw needs or deficiencies that we needed to address as part of the budget process. When we met with the various departments, we took a lot of effort in looking at their spending history, which was one of the directions you had provided to us, and were able to, in some cases, reduce the allocation that they had received in prior years for operations. You also indicated to us that we needed to be a little bit more aggressive as to our sales tax revenue projections, as well as our property tax perceived, and what that percentage looks like. And we put all of those into our budget assumptions. So, I think the most important message to kind of start off this process with today is to say that we were able to provide enhancements within your budget with a 2.5 cent tax reduction, and still meet the needs of the residents of your community. And to me, that is an extremely important message, I think, to take away. And at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gates, who's going to talk to you a little bit about the tax rates, as well as kind of what our tax rate history has been since 2015. And through this process, he and I are going to kind of be going back and forth as it relates to the presentation. But before I step away for a moment, are there any questions from the board as to any of the information I have provided thus far? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. So, Cindy mentioned, we're going to take a quick look at the tax rates, and I want to talk a little bit about how we were able to get there. Because as mentioned, you gave us initial direction on March 26 to find a penny and a half reduction, and then the subsequent direction Monday night to find an additional penny, or to reduce essentially on the capital program. So, what you see here is the table that represents all of the countywide tax rates. We'll talk about the fire tax district rates in a few minutes. And you can see, we have, going back to 2015, which was really the first year we broke out the schools' tax rate and the general county tax rate. At that time, and that was the first year after revow, you can see, we had about 76 cents, a little over 76 cents. And then as we progressed, we added the emergency medical services tax rate, broke that out for more transparency, and as well as the countywide fire tax rate. And I feel like that we needed to, you have taken into consideration when you're looking at the countywide tax rate, that buried into that 30.64 cents at that time was that 2.6 cents and that half cent, or whatever that subsidy was to the fire departments at that time. So where we end today is, the current direction is 75, just under 75.6 cents. I'll point out, and we'll have a little bit of conversation toward the end, that we plugged in the 44 and a half at this point because we haven't received direction from you as a board as to what to do with schools. So that rate is not a recommendation at this point, and we'll look at those, that funding detail toward the end. It's just right now placeholder for that purpose, that's why it's highlighted. So as you can see, we peaked out last year at 78.1, and at this point, it's 75.6 cents. Some of the things we did to be able to deliver that 24.34 cents in the general fund was, as Cindy mentioned, looking at year-end, kind of where everybody would be on a normal spending pattern, reducing their budgets to that. You made a lot of, you gave us a lot of insight into your feeling about use of fund balance, so we're maximizing our cash position and using that fund balance where it's appropriate, looking at different contingency items, for instance. One of the things we really worked hard with departments is to focus on those things that are, we know are going to happen, and those things we're not sure of, and those things that we're not sure of, we went ahead and took those out, knowing that next year during the process, if we had an absolute emergency, or if we had something that would come up, we'd have to come back to the board and maybe even use fund balance at that time to cover those. So the budget you have in front of you really takes into consideration the year-end projection, the contingent items out. Cindy's going to talk about some of the limited growth we had in certain areas to address those changing needs and those kinds of things. So it's really skinny down, and it is pretty aggressive on the revenue side. We bumped up our ad lorm collection rate from, normally we would use about 98 and a half, working with Van in his office, we're up to 99 and a quarter. And I don't think he'd be a lot, I think, much more comfortable if we went up higher than 99 and a quarter, I think he'd be really concerned, but we're seeing the benefit of that. So that's how we were able to get to that two and a half cents that you've given us direction on.
Before you leave that, I do think it's important to note that, yes, in fiscal year 18, we did add the approved debt rate, but I've heard comments from others that the county did not reduce their tax rate last year as it related to some of the other entities that we fund. And we did in fact absorb some of that reduction as well, so that our residents would not feel the full impact of that 3.09 cents associated with the debt.
And that's a, that's a really good point. As you can see, going 27.82 down to 26.84, so almost a penny right there. And keep it in mind, the net increase down across the bottom going from 76, right at 76.7 to 78, is really due to the increase in funding for fire and then that debt rate. It's kind of the net result of that. Are there any questions on tax rate, or, I know you're going to give a little more detail about that here in a few minutes, but that's, we were able to deliver based on your direction, that two and a half cent reduction in the general fund.
I do have a quick question.
Okay.
The 3.09 cents, you said that it could actually fund more debt than, I think you were going to absorb another $10 million in debt.
Right.
What would the rate be if it accurately reflected what we're using that for?
At this point, the 3.09, the way that that plan was set up, if you remember back to some of those discussions, it is set up as a sinking fund or as a kind of a level-loaded rate. So, we haven't issued the second tranche of the GO bonds. So at this point, we are not positive about what the result of that will be. Once you issue that second tranche, you'll know what your ongoing debt service is, and at that point, we can adjust the rate downward. When we were talking about the $10 million, the $10 million translated into debt service is right around $800,000, so it's fairly minimal impact from a, from a rate perspective. So we felt confident that based on where we're at, we could make those changes. If we were to, at this point, start to reduce this rate, your long-term impact into your rate model for the debt service, we could go back and relay it to see how that would affect it, but we haven't issued that second tranche, so we're not exactly sure what the maximum effect could be. So what you want to do is wait until you issue the second tranche of GO bonds, and once you issue those and you've locked in your payment, then you can make, we can adjust that rate downward to what we know those actual payments will be. We're confident it'll go down, we're not sure exactly what that needs to be. So you're just, right now, you're building up some ability to reduce that rate further later in the cycle. Does that answer your question? One other thing I want to point out, before we get into some detail, this is a graphic that we look at to kind of talk about, if you're looking at your tax dollar, where is your tax dollar going in the county? Your general tax dollar, because as we know, all of these, from school rate down, are dedicated to those specific services. So every penny of the funding, for instance, for schools' tax goes to support the schools, or every penny of the EMS tax goes to support EMS. But then where does your, of that 24.34 cents, where is that going? Well, you can see, the centralized revenue pool is where we collect it all, and then it's paid out to these areas. So growth management, for instance, just a little over a quarter cent, and that's because Brian collects permitting fees and those kinds of things. So this is his net impact to the tax rate. You can see emergency services, about 2.8 cents, community services, 3.4 cents, general government, and this is just kind of a bucket where it catches all the little pieces, administrative services, the manager's office, economic development, year, the board's budget, that would be, you know, tenths of pennies and so forth, and that's about 5.3 cents. And included in that is UCSB's debt service. Right now, we allocate 100% of the sales tax, 100% of debt service is funded through sales tax, so it doesn't have a drain on ad lorm, but we do allocate sales tax to that. You have the registered deeds and so forth, and this, she always teeters back and forth between being what we refer to as a net taker or net giver, in this case, and so forth. So that's what's included in that general government bucket. Your two biggest departments, human services, and they're largely revenue funded from the federal and state government, so they're the largest budget in the general fund, but they're not the largest user of tax dollars. Your largest user of tax dollars is, I think you would expect, based on your direction and based on your priority then, is the sheriff's office. And that's entirely expected, and I think based on the direction you've given us and the prioritization you've given us over time, that's how we would see, that's what you would expect based on that. So go ahead, question.
Yeah, my question is, is this your projected coming year expenditures, or is this last year historical?
This is projected expenditure, so this then, the tax rate equals, this is how your 24.34 cents plays out in next year's budget. If you, I did some comparison, went back and looked at the FY 2018's adopted budget, because we do this analysis every year, and it's relatively percentage basis the same as you'd expect when Cindy talks about the sheriff's office with some of the SROs and some of the things we're going to do, or we're proposing to do there. The sheriff's office is growing as a percentage of the total tax rate. That's largely where your growth is, because it's not supported by revenue, it's a direct tax impact. These other areas, again, Brian's group always teeters on break even, and then these administrative areas, it's roughly the same as it's been in the past from a distribution perspective. So, it's what we would expect it to be, but this is reflective of what's the, what the recommended budget is.
I think it's important to know that our operating budget, based upon what I am recommending to the board, grew by 2.4.
2.4 percent.
2.4 percent in total from last year.
And if you remember, there were some global items that worked into that too, so we were able to absorb a lot of the things you as a board directed us to do as far as common class, and we have some drivers around OPEB. This continues, you know, this budget still continues maintaining our OPEB liability and being able to fund that OPEB, that long-term OPEB risk. So from that perspective, we were able to get a lot of those costs in and make the reductions necessary to accommodate that, and that's a credit to the organization, a credit to the EDs for being able to go back, when asked to reduce their request, and when asked to find that savings based on where we projected they would end up year-end, to be able to do that. So, do you want to talk about?
Yes. So I want to go over in some detail where actually, what is included within the budget that you will be receiving on June 1st. And a lot of it is predicated upon the direction we have received from the board as to what your top resources are within the organization. One of the things that you heard from the Board of Education when you met with them twice within this last year, fiscal year, is that safety and security with respect to our elementary schools, and I believe we have 33 elementary schools. We met with the sheriff's office and said, we know you've had discussions with the schools, we would like to know as our chief law enforcement officer, what your recommendation is and for meeting the needs that have been expressed by the schools. And the sheriff came back to us and said that he felt that he could provide resource officers within clusters, since we have resource officers in every high school and every middle school, and that he would need nine resource officers and one supervisor. And he believes that this may not be where you end up in future years, but he felt that this was an appropriate program to address the issues that had been identified by the schools. If you also recall, when you heard from the sheriff, an area of concern that he expressed to you was detention officers. Between vacation, sick leave, and training, that, for basic law enforcement training, that our detention officers have to go through, that they usually find themselves in a shortage position at the jail. And that was a true safety concern for him. And so, as part of his budget request, we agreed to, he asked for four detention officers, and that is what is included within the recommended budget. Last year, we spent quite a bit of discussion talking about an request for an assistant fire marshal. At that point in time, the board requested that we fund the administrative assistant because we were having, our fire marshals having to do a lot of telephone work, meeting information requests from the public, and to see where we stood as it related to being able to still meet our standards by providing that administrative support. That administrative support was hired, has been with us for the majority of the year, and as you heard from Curtis when he made his budget presentation, we are still not meeting state mandates as it relates to our fire inspections. So we are coming back to you and recommending one additional fire marshal, so that we can get up to what is required to us statutorily. Within our human services area, we are recommending three social workers, and these are in the areas of probably those that are most vulnerable within our system. Our child welfare area, as well as foster care, and those adults that we are responsible for ensuring their care, and so we are recommending those three positions. Within our building code inspections, we have typically run at about a two-day timeline in being able to perform inspections. Unfortunately, with the amount of inspections that we are having to do today with the complexity of the buildings that we are seeing built within our community, we are now slipping to more of three or four day turnaround. And in my opinion, that is not an acceptable level of service that we should be providing to our community, who pays for this service, the builders and the contractors. And so, in order to fill that gap, we believe we need two additional positions. And I think it's important to note that really this is a revenue-neutral type of position, is that we do charge our fees to cover the services that we provide within building code inspections. And so, these two positions in fact would be covered by those fees, just as Jeff indicated on the social workers. Those in fact are subsidized by the state at, are these at 50%?
About 33.
33%. Then we have, presently, we have one compliance officer that manages all complaints as it relates to our unified development ordinance, as well as any violations to zoning permits, any violations to building code, and that continues to grow with respect to the complaints and with respect to the violations. We have had to, of late, we've taken on a couple of projects, one was swimming pools. We found a number of swimming pools that had in fact not been, received a final certificate of occupancy. So we have gone back and worked with the contractors and worked with the builders to try to get them into compliance, and the things that we are finding is fencing is required around a pool, so that you don't have child drownings, et cetera, as well as electrical inspections. And those are the two areas that we are finding that they either are not doing, or they're not calling for inspections, or they may be doing them incorrectly. So this particular position would allow us to continue to manage that for the safety of our residents. Then two, construction inspectors, an instrument control technician, and one cross-control program coordinator. And Ed spoke about these positions as it relates to continued growth within our utility system. All of these are funded by your water and wastewater fund. The, as he told you, the whole cross-connection control program, this is to ensure that when people are connecting to our system, that they don't have a cross-connection, so they are, we are not contaminating our water supply. And these are all contained within the rates that the board has previously approved as it relates to water and wastewater, and they are 100% funded, I said, by the utility.
Before you go forth, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
How does the social workers relate to the schools' concern about having representatives, mental health representatives for them? Is that totally separate, or is that working to?
It is separate, and when we get to the school requests, we will be making some comments and some recommendations as it relates to that particular program. So this is separate and distinct as it relates to our needs, and unfortunately, the number of cases that we are seeing and that we are having to handle, and as I indicated, you know, these are really those in our community that somebody needs to speak from, and then we are the ones to speak from them and to ensure that they are protected. Yes, sir.
And that goes to an important thing, is that we are compensated 33% by the state. Would the school system be compensated that same by the state for those, or would it be a total cost to the county tax?
It's all county costs, I believe, what needs asking for.
So the benefit that we would have is by working, as Chairman Simpson said, with the school system and doing it through the county, we have some state dollars coming in, not just totally taxpayer, county taxpayer funded.
Potentially.
Does that make sense?
Okay. So any questions on this slide before we move forward? Okay. With respect to, and you'll see the topics that these are organized by, and we tried to, we went back to what the board had established as your five areas of importance within the organization and things that you wish for us to strive towards. So on sustainability, which I would also call maintaining an appropriate level of service, is, one is a maintenance technician within our county park system. We continue to have our parks used to a greater and greater usage, and having a maintenance, an additional maintenance technician to ensure that those parks are in a condition that is not only aesthetically pleasing, but also address any safety issues that we have. One, capital improvement program project manager to plan and coordinate the ongoing need for construction maintenance of county facilities. Right now, that is being housed in the water and sewer department, which probably is not appropriate since these are usually general fund projects. And as we see projects continue to come forward, we really do need someone dedicated to overseeing those particular construction projects versus pulling a very overburdened, what I would say, water and sewer staff to also do those general fund projects. And then a GIS analyst to assist with the overall mapping and planning of the county water system, and this particular one is fully funded by the water and sewer fund. Yes, sir.
Maintenance technician for the parks?
Yes, sir.
You said additional, is that a new position?
Yes, it is a new position.
In addition to someone already doing?
Yes, sir. We do have staff, do you know, I'm sorry, Jeff, I don't know the total number of maintenance-
We have four staff right now, it's a seven day a week operation, so we're running into schedule a bit of abuse with our maintenance staff on the weekends.
And this prevents us from having to call them in on-call overtime, et cetera, so, to maintain our parks. Under organizational strengthening, we are recommending two field data collection technicians as- As you are aware, we are going to be facing a reappraisal in the not-too-distant future, and we feel that it is absolutely essential that we ensure that the information that we have out there is accurate, and so, these two positions are really boots-on-the-ground to help us with that initiative. A budget analyst within the budget department, as you can imagine, our complexity, our budget continues to grow. That particular area, it is comprised of three individuals right now, and this would add a fourth. And having worked with that division a great deal in the last six months, definitely have a need for additional capacity in that area. Recommending a part-time administrative assistant to digitize documents and processes. This is ongoing. I think we spoke a little bit about when Michelle made her presentation on human services, just how many files in human services before we actually relocated. We actually had put through our document imaging program. This is to assist us through, throughout the county and other areas. I know we've talked with the chair and the vice chair about how that would assist us in the clerk's office, and this is also to address that particular need as we discussed. Also, within human services, a human services evaluator, trainer, trader, and data analyst, and this is really to help us ensure our staff is appropriately trained, improve their performance, and ensure that we are in compliance with all federal and state requirements. A health promotions coordinator for our community support and outreach. Just, was it last week or the week before? Two weeks ago. I had the privilege, I would say, of attending a forum that was put on by our human services staff. It was called "The Tale of Two Union Counties," and really talked a great deal about mental health and some of the issues that we are dealing with, and really the haves and the have-nots within our community, and how do we better deal with those that are at poverty level and don't have the resources to seek out some of these resources that may be available within our community. And this particular position would assist us in continuing to outreach and develop those partnerships. I think Michelle puts it best when she talks about what her vision is for human services, and that is to ensure that the children that we are seeing today, for the variety of programs that we have, do not show backup at our facilities with their children. So, we really are trying to be much more proactive versus reactive as it relates to meeting the needs of that particular portion of our community to ensure that we don't have a revolving door as it relates to our clients. In water and wastewater, as Ed indicated to you, our system continues to grow by leaps and bounds, and we are requesting an additional customer service specialist to meet the needs of our growing customer base. And then also, and that's 100% funded by water and wastewater, and also with your county and wastewater infrastructure, looking at a project manager, a maintenance electrician, and a maintenance superintendent to deal with our ever-increasing infrastructure that we have within that particular part of our organization. So, were there any other questions as it related to any of those before Jeff talks a little bit about firefighting? Yes, sir.
I noticed back in your thing, there's a lot of reference to project managers, superintendent, other managers, and we have a challenge in meeting our deadlines, as you explained just a minute ago on inspections. And I'd like to understand better, and we can do this offline, but I'd like to understand better how the managers in some of these organizations are going to effectively improve the ability for our people to get out and do the inspections. I know that in one organization, they say a manager only supervises six people. That's extremely low from my background. So, I'd like offline, have some conversation between now and the budget time to help understand how that's going to help us achieve those goals, because, you know, the perk test, you know, it's gotten better, not significantly, but it's gotten better, and it's creating havoc in the county. So, I'd like to understand that offline.
All right. I'm absolutely happy to sit down and meet with you. And, you know, sometimes you look at the titles of superintendent and managers, and those are titles, and I will tell you that our ratio of number of individuals to supervisors is far greater than what you just reflected as it relates to direct reports.
Well, that's what staff has conveyed to me, and that's where I came from that. But, you know, these are working individuals that actually, you know, superintendent, he's doing, out doing the same work as the staff, is reporting to him and helping us achieve the goals that we have to by state statute, and I'm okay with it.
Well, I think that the important thing to point out is when we sit down with all those departments and talk through all this, we really focus on trying to deliver frontline, service-oriented folks, not management, and being cognizant of what the board has said. So, all these positions, as Cindy mentioned, for instance, a CIP project manager may have manager in his title, but he's really a person that's actually physically managing projects, not managing necessarily people who are adding to the executive ranks of the county. So, these are really all frontline service provider people for the most part, or working on services to provide direct to the, to the public, not, there's not really any management or expansion of the administrative aspects.
And I would tell you, and I know that you all have probably heard it more times than you wish to, is we are a very lean organization, and I would tell you, everyone in this room, everyone in this organization, including myself, consider themselves working managers or directors because of the fact that we do not have the luxury to just sit in our offices and, and push paper, is that we have to do hands-on work as well, because otherwise the work of the county would not get that.
I agree with Mr. Hale, but, you know, we have a department in this county that has loaded administration, and that's why we have teachers going to Raleigh to protest because we're spending all our money on administration. So, I think to his point, you know, we don't want to see that happen here.
I would say there is no worry, but I'm certainly willing to sit down with you, Commissioner, and anyone else who wants additional information, happy to provide it.
Well, I, you know, and also, I'd like to see a timeline to achieve. I mean, you take the Wi-Fi, you gave us a timeline, and my understanding, we're on it to get the schools done, and I'd like to-
You're talking about the bidirectional tennis?
Yes, ma'am. And that's, that's excellent. And I'd like to see some of the timelines to get some of these other things, because we've been talking about them for years, and it's time to make that happen.
Okay, and you and I can sit down, and if you've got some specific instances, we can certainly provide those responses to you.
Okay. Any other, before we move on to fire departments? Okay, so, we're going to talk about the fire departments. I'm thankfully not going to go through every single fire department unless you have a specific question. Curtis and I and Cindy met in one round with all of them, and then Curtis and I followed up with those that won secondary meetings after they received their recommendation. Remember to the April 16th meeting, we provided you with a complete book, including EMS funding requests. So, hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review that. It was the 11-by-17, orange-ish red book that we provided to you. On this table, what you can see is that those fire departments that have bold are areas where we didn't recommend their, their full funding requests, that they, they asked for maybe additional people or additional equipment, and after meeting with them and talking about them in context with the entire plan across the county, because remember, fire is a system, not an individual fire department. We made the determination that the system would be better served by adding resources in other areas. And that, and we did add resources across the county, as you can see, the total budgets are up about 11%, and that's largely due to personnel. And I will talk generally for a moment about the fire departments in the county as a system. What we're seeing is a challenge in most of the fire departments in being able to maintain their volunteer base. So, what we saw a lot this year was the request for additional part-time paid staff to provide coverage during the daytime in some areas at nighttime, and I think that's symptomatic of Union County changing as a dynamic and the residents changing. So, we're used to you have people that be working in certain areas, they'd be there working in the area during the day, perhaps on their farm, and they'd be able to respond to calls during the day. Now, they're maybe working in Charlotte, and they're not able to respond to calls during the day. We have several fire departments that that was just the reality of their situation. In other areas like Waxaw, you see the development of Waxaw growing and the density growing. So, it makes it more of a challenge then to, A, find volunteers because those folks are then driving into Charlotte, and B, to have to provide additional firefighters beyond one or two to be able to respond adequately to the second and third calls that they have with motor vehicle accidents. So, and looking at Bakers, Bakers had asked for an additional position at this time in reviewing kind of their staffing model. We determined that we weren't going to recommend that. Beaver Lane, the big request that they had, was a ladder truck, and one of the things we really wanted to do is be sure that ladder trucks are very costly, so properly positioning them in the county and looking at them as a county-wide asset versus an individual fire department asset. So, we talked to Beaver Lane, and the discussion we had with them was, we need to coordinate this, for instance, with Wenge, because Wenge has signaled to us that eventually they will also ask for a ladder truck. So, there's still a little bit of work to be done on that. We weren't quite ready to recommend that. Fairview asked for an additional position. This was, they started getting paid staff last year. They're finding that it's a different experience managing paid staff than what they had in the past. So, we're, we recommended a position, they asked for two. We're only recommending the one. When we had done at Sandy Ridge, Sandy Ridge had asked for an SCBA. We're recommending the SCBA, but we think there's enough leftover funds in the SCBA program for 2018. If you remember back, we put about a million dollars into the fire fund to fund SCBA out of the general fund. While as the departments have been purchasing those, they're coming in under, under what we had expected. So, we repurposed the remainder of that money to provide SCBA this year for some of the departments. Stallings had asked for an additional position, and we are not recommending that this time. We feel like Chief Porter has a compliment necessary to respond. He's one of the largely paid staff departments. Waxaw had asked, primarily, their big ask was to get to a level of paid staffing both at their jar station, Station 27, and Station 18, which is their main Waxaw station. We're recommending adding a position to their Station 18, which is their main station in Waxaw, but at this time, due to the cost of renovations and some, and just the necessary or the demand down at Station 27 near jars, we're not recommending staffing that station with paid staff full-time or overnight. We are recommending putting in a diesel exhaust system down there for the safety of the volunteers that are manning that station, but that was the big difference. And it, too sharp, but also asked for some land acquisition and those kinds of things. And we, kind of absent of what our county-wide strategy is going to be, particularly on stations, and I'll talk about that in just a second, we weren't ready to run in, acquiring land or moving forward with station construction in that area. And then Wesley Chapel, Wesley Chapel had asked for two additional positions. We're recommending one of the two. The additional position we're not recommending at this time was, and I'm talking with Steve McClendon and working with him, Chief McClendon had asked to start ramping up his staff in anticipation of a construction of a new station in the Red Road area, the Red Road extension area. And our position has historically been that we are not going to hire staff in anticipation of a new station, that when that station is under construction, then we'll start adding the staff to staff it up. Their initial design at this point and construction, I don't believe is anticipated to start until late 2020. So, we are not recommending an additional position for that. However, we are recommending, he did request an additional position, command staff. His pay ranks have grown sufficient, so we're recommending adding a member of command staff there, and also adding some funding to help him pay off some of his loans early to be able to fund his additional station within his current streams of revenue and not have to bump that rate later. So, when working with Chief McClendon, we were able to get there. Beyond those, and talking with departments, we were able to get pretty much their requests and their funding needs. One of the things we did look at then was kind of what the station needs are. There are three or four departments that had asked for additional satellite stations or new construction stations, and pending kind of the decision on what the outcome is as far as the fire funding structure, we didn't recommend any additional stations at this time. That also included heavy renovations and expansions. I think what we need to do is determine as an organization how we're going to approach that. The, a station can range anywhere from about a million five to over $3 million, and that just depends on where it's at, what it is, what the department has, and there's a, there's a fine balance, I think, between balancing the autonomy of the fire department versus the funding sources. All of the fire fee districts are $100, so the majority of them are getting probably close to half, if not more than half, of their funding from the countywide funding stream. So, given that and what that cost would do to that countywide funding stream, I think over time, we need to develop that comprehensive strategy for how to address the station needs. And Curtis and I spent a lot of time talking about it, we talked to a lot of chiefs about it, you know, recognizing, again, it's a system of firefighting. It's not, it's, it's made up of 17 individual units, but they're all interconnected, and ensuring that they can respond to turnout is necessary to support each other ensures then that our residents get that fire service. So, what we're trying to do, or we'll be looking at doing once we kind of come back with that final funding strategy, we'll then address the strategic question of how then do we address the station needs. But I think at this point, it's a little premature to jump out there, and there are some stations that are kind of struggling with their situation, particularly Fairview. For instance, their stations are relatively old, and fire trucks have gotten bigger. So, some of these stations can't fit their fire trucks or have ordered trucks that won't necessarily fit in their station. I think Fairview is the one where if the truck's not full of water, it won't make the clearance because the trucks have gotten bigger, the stations have obviously grown significantly. So, that's kind of the fire funding strategy at this point. As Cindy mentioned, we've got no requests from the chiefs to come to speak with you directly. Curtis and I, I believe, spoke with three fire departments after the, after we sent out the initial recommendation that wanted to come back and have additional conversation. I think there, we resolved that and kind of coming to some agreement on that, and if you remember on the 60, we didn't have a recommendation on Waxaw, which is new, so we do have a recommendation about Waxaw. I'll show you the tax rates in just a second. But are there any questions concerning the firefighting?
This board was promised to have that firefighting study back to us 28th of April. When are we going to get that?
Well, we did indicate that to you, and I will tell you at that point in time, it was based upon, at least, you know, I misunderstood, I apologize. It was based upon my understanding that the board wanted to have that information so that you could implement a new system by July 1. Upon additional conversation with the board, that was not the indication that I received. And so, we have taken additional time in working with the chiefs. We had, I think, two different meetings with the chiefs. They have provided us with additional information as it relates to items they would like for us to consider as part of the study. And Michael, I don't know if we have a new date that we are looking at?
Not yet. We had the consulting with tax to clean up the numbers, because when we went with the board, we wanted to clear up the funding situation, so we backed it that. Had conversations with the fire chiefs, conversation with the board, and they're putting all that together to put that together. I'm supposed to contact you next week to see whether they can come back and be with the board again, based on those conversations.
I'm pleased to say that my conversations with chiefs and those, I know that probably some that came back to you, that really there is not much discourse on the funding, but it is, you know, it's imperative. I've had conversations at commission meetings, across the state, district meetings and everything. Everybody is experiencing the same thing. Probably the biggest problem they have is they can't find, they can't find paid volunteers, and they can't find people who are qualified. So, I think that's something that will continue, and I think our consultant maybe needs to take that into consideration. But it's, this is going to be a bigger problem. I'd like to see some kind of response from you before we have to vote on the budget to make sure that we, we do what we can this year, and I think, I agree, we all knew that we couldn't implement a new plan this year, but we pushed it down the road for three years, or four, almost four, and it's time that we, we come together early on in the new year with a plan to facilitate how to fund these, because it's only going to get worse, not going to get better.
And Steph absolutely agrees with you. We have not been able to resolve this issue. I think it's imperative that we resolve it. We would like to bring solution sets to you soon so that you all can make a- soon so that you all can make a decision so that whatever you decide would be implemented in your 2025, is, I believe, what we discussed. In going back to the fire stations, I think as part of the overall, once we determine how we fund those needs for renovations or new stations, and it's kind of a little bit of everything across the board, so I really think there has to be, as part of that process, some criteria that we establish. Because I know when I look at some of the stations, and I think Fairview is a good example, is they are, probably have more of a need than maybe some of our other districts have as it relates needing to a new station. So, there has to be, I think, an evaluation criteria because we're certainly not going to be able to do all of them at the same time. And, and some of the, those that have a tax district presently may be able to fund them through existing sources where those who are presently in the fire fee absolutely cannot. And to your comment about paid volunteers, yes, they do, even with paying them, they continue to have a difficult time. And I think that's indicative of Jackson. Jackson actually came in with a budget reduction request. And when I met with the chief, I said, this is a novelty. Please tell me why.
That's the conservative corner of the county.
Yes, sir. But it's because we, they had asked for two part-time positions, equivalent positions, last year, and they were unable to find anyone to take those positions. So, they decided, okay, that model is not going to work for us. And so, they're going back to more aggressively trying to find the volunteers to, to staff their station. But it is a continuing problem. I absolutely agree with you.
And I think there'll be a lot during that discussion, the comprehensive approach to the stations, how the towns are involved, and particularly on the western side of the county, has a lot to do with that discussion because they're making those planning decisions and those permitting decisions that are driving a lot of that growth. So, you see the station, for instance, in Waxaw, it's Waxaw's planning decisions and building decisions that are driving a lot of that need for those additional people. Waxaw, same thing in the Stallings area, Indian Trail, and Hemby Bridge and those stations. So, I think it's going, once the funding strategy comes back, and kind of put your mind at ease, Commissioner, this is an expenditure side discussion and the fire fee discussion or the fire funding discussions are revenue side discussions. So, it really doesn't necessarily impact until you start talking about the stations and how you're going to approach that this side of the equation and what you adopt this year. It's going to be that revenue and how we generate that revenue going forward, and then becomes the question in that process. So, I think they can run parallel tracks, and you're not polluting or dismissing ideas or dismissing concepts by working through this budget process and completing that while you're still working through the nuances of the funding structure.
We also need to set expectations as well.
Absolutely.
You know, and you're talking about funding. You look at Fairview, they need to be commended because the town of Fairview bought the most recent truck for them. And that, that's a good example of said, I think. And they need to be commended for that. But...
And a lot of our municipalities do participate. I know Marshville provides some money, when you get, you know, provided actually the station for them. So, they do in different ways. They, I just, I'm not aware of any that are willing to take that next step and actually, as weddings have been done, and actually be responsible for that service. And so, we will see where that goes.
Have you ever, one of the problems that there happen, is they're competing, stations are competing among themselves. Do we need to set a level of what we fund firefighters? Maybe, do we?
We had a lot of conversation about that during the contract negotiation. And there's two, there's two things about that. It's, they want to maintain their autonomy, and they're really particular about us not setting kind of minimum rates or setting maximum rates and those kinds of things, or even, you know, in some cases, sharing some of those rates with us. Because they saw that as a competitive advantage for their recruitment. But also, the, the structure of how they pay differs from, you know, say, down in Jackson, they may have had some idea of how they want to pay per call or something, to all the way to your larger stations, which really pay with an hourly rate and even overtime in cases. So, to do that, you kind of have to create a uniformed structure and pay system and then to set those rates. And during the contract issue, we really were resistant to that, and we were sensitive to their autonomy, as we've always tried to be sensitive to the autonomy in this process. It's certainly something we could talk about, but I would think from the fire chiefs, that that would be a discussion for that Fire Chiefs Association, for them to kind of come to agreement on as an association and how they as a group are going to manage that. Because we don't want to get too far, other than maybe standards, get too far into how they manage their staffing and how they manage their, their employees. Because those part-time people who are not part-time are still employees of those organizations and not county employees. So, I don't disagree with you conceptually, but dealing with 17 entities kind of makes that a little more difficult. Does that answer you?
I understand. I just think there's, we need to set some standards like you said.
So, within that plays out, again, I mentioned all of the fee districts, which are all except for five, are going to be at a hundred dollars this upcoming year, which is nothing new. They've been at a hundred dollars for a year or two. In the tax districts, given some growth and different things, they're kind of, some are going up, some are going down, just depending. Hemby Bridge, we're recommending to go down to 488, and that's reflective of the growth in that area. And that meets Chief Blythe's needs and so forth. The Springs District is going down just a little bit, and that's reflective of the growth in his area. But Chief Gaddy is continuing to do, to work out there and opening the second station and so forth and being able to provide services in that area. Stallings is going to go up just a little bit, and that's related to just additional costs and hours. He's providing some additional policies to his, benefits to his employees and those kinds of things, but not much. It's two tenths of a cent. Waxaw, that's probably where the biggest increase is, and that again is to add to the staffing to allow Chief Sharp then to provide continuous staffing around the block. I believe this, Curtis, if I'm right, it puts him at four 24/7, right? So, he'll have paid staff there 24/7 internally, then they should be able to meet their needs and their call, call volume. The Waxaw, I'm sorry, Wesley Chapel, that position increased there as well as a few of his other cost increases, recommending right out of half cent increase. And then the countywide fire tax, we're recommending go down just 1100. That really just balances it out. And I did point out, the countywide funding that we take out of that countywide rate, a couple of years ago, if you remember, we switched over to managing the radio program and managing the radio replacement program for all of the fire departments instead of doing one-offs for everyone and having them come to us. What we were finding was, everybody was purchasing secondary or backup radios. Well, 17 fire departments each having five backup radios or the county could have five or 10 backup, backup radios. It just makes more economic sense since we manage that system anyway is to, to maintain that radio program. So, the way it works right now is that we hear, we get this process, they make requests for radios, we provide batteries and other pieces of equipment, and then we fund that through part of that countywide rate. So, there's about 620, or 660,000 in that countywide rate that's committed to that radio replacement program, and new radios then for the fire departments as they change their service needs over time. And that, and that can be done then within that current rate and still reducing it down to 103.
Jeff, Wesley Chapel, you said you denied their positions, or?
We denied one of the two. They'd asked for two. They'd asked for an additional paramedic firefighter, and that was the station, that the Newtown station. And what that was is Chief McClendon is starting, wanted, wanted to start adding one or two a year up to the construction of their station so that when he got to the construction, he would just take, or when that was complete, he would just take those four new positions added over several years and move them over to the new station. What we're recommending, as we did with the other fire, fire stations, particularly Hemby Bridge, is instead of funding those positions ahead of your station and adding additional people to just kind of learn your operation in that process, when you get closer to having that station eminently finished, then we'll add the positions into that so that you can staff that station. It's a timing issue. It's, it's kind of our past practice and past recommendation to you is that we don't want to build up staff until that building is more imminent and ready to open.
They're in the design phase right now, I believe, as Jeff indicated. Really, once they break to ground and that is a little ways off, that I would anticipate that you'll receive a similar request or even maybe two positions in next year's budget, which we would find more favorable in meeting the timeline of any station actually being closer being opened.
And I think when you, when you take Wesley Chapel into consideration, it's one, it's our largest operation from a fire department perspective. We have three active stations. One of those is in the Weddington area, the whole Providence station, the Providence fire response area. And then the other two stations, about to be a third operated in the Wesley Chapel area and on the Newtown residence area. So, again, like Cindy mentioned, I would expect, and the conversation with Curtis, that we will see that request next year. And I think it's probably something we'll need to fund next year, but at this point, we didn't want to add that in anticipation of waiting till it's more, and it's more concrete.
And I would also say by us providing additional staffing in the Waxaw district, we think that will help Wesley Chapel with respect to some of the calls that they're having to run into that area.
I spoke with Chief McClendon, and one of the, one of the reasons for doing that is we do have an exposure since we can't find firefighters, period. Come time for the opening of that and not being able to find the firefighters. So, we just need to take that into consideration. We may be a couple of years away from that fire station, but we can't wait till the last minute to say, okay, go hire the people because it may not be there. I mean, I actually ran into firefighters in South Carolina, coast, have the same problem. It's not unique to North Carolina.
And we're not recommending that we wait till the last minute. We're just recommending that they are closer to breaking ground before we start adding those staff since they are just in the design phase presently.
And also, I think with that station in particular that he's wanting to staff open for, I think there has to be some discussion with Chief McClendon about the response into the Providence district because of its geographic location and how it's going to run in relationship. Because you remember Wesley Chapel, while we talk about it as one unit, really runs into two fire districts, and how that funding shakes out between the two fire districts. So, I think there, there's a little bit of work to be done in that staffing model and the cost allocation of that. Because you have to, where that station's located, it's right in the corner of the Wesley Chapel district and the Providence district. So, how it's going to run.
There may be a municipality that should be a partner in somebody's...
Well, I can tell you, I've spoken to the mayor and I've spoken to their council people. Both have approached me to bring Weddington back. Basically, I told them, we got enough on our plate right now. We need to see how the funding plan comes out before they come back. But we'll have that opportunity next year, I'm sure.
Absolutely. But I do think with Wesley Chapel, it's just not quite time yet to have those conversations, I think, as we get more...
Oh, I agree.
...to that, and we'll figure that out. And my understanding is Chief McClendon under, maybe not, doesn't completely agree, but understands our position on that. At least I haven't heard from him. I think Curtis spoke with him as recently as yesterday. So, and we work closely with the state all the time and have no problem working with them on that issue. So, let's talk about EMS funding.
Jeff, we've been at this a little over an hour.
Would you like to take a break?
So, we're going to, we have another issue, an item to address at 10:45. So, we'll recess until 10:45. Give everybody a chance to take a break.
Chief?
Yes.
Who would you want to...
Ladies and gentlemen, it's 10:45, according to my watch. So, at this time, I will call our second special meeting to a length and briefly comment. As of approximately March 16th, we had a notice from Mr. Lance Simpson that he would be resigning his position at the Board of County Commissioners due to a career change to a different location. We took that resignation and then contacted our legal department to ask the proper procedure. We learned that according to statute, that is the Board of County Commissioners that make the reappointment to fill the unexpired term, with one exception, and that is that we contact the local party, which that individual was registered under, and ask for recommendations from the party with regard to replacement. We did that. We contacted Daniel Barry, who is chairman of the Union County Republican Party. They went through a very detailed and professional process and selected their individual and made that recommendation. The Board of County Commissioners took it up at one of their meetings. It was a feeling on the part of some commissioners that we'd make that appointment. It was a feeling on the other, some of the other commissioners that due to the close proximity to a primary, a Republican primary, that we'd wait until that process was concluded in an effort to look at who that individual might be. And of course, there would be more people voting in the primaries. So, we thought, you know, we'd turn it over to the people, let the people decide. So, we went through that process. The primary was Tuesday, of course. We did have a definitive winner in Dennis Rake. In turn, I contacted Mr. Rake. Mr. Rake asked to not be considered for that position, and he would like to continue his term on Board of Education. So, that leaves us at this point back to making a decision on filling the appointment or the position vacated by Commissioner Simpson. Commissioner, here.
Yes, I make a, make a motion that we accept the Republican Party's recommendation of Barbara Harrison to fill that. It was, like you said, it was a very extensive process, and a lot of our community got to participate in that. And so, I'd like to proceed with Ms. Harrison.
Any discussion?
I'll lose it.
Comment?
I'd just like to say that, you know, thank you to Dennis Rake. But I know that speaking with Dennis myself, that, you know, if he did resign from the school board at this time, due to the structure of the new way that the Board of Edisons is done, it would throw a November in a turmoil. So, commend him for thinking of the county and putting the county president and staying in his position and completing some of the things in the school board. So, thank you to Mr. Rake.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Harrison?
Yes.
Come forward. We'll get you some more in.
Thank you.
Come right up front.
My husband is the one in nine. He said I was going to go back to work, and he figured he'd just make me come back to work earlier. Now, he's trying to play this, oh, no.
You want to go on up to...
Sure. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. And do you, Barbara Bensel Harrison, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as commissioner for the County of Union, so help you God.
I will.
Do you, Barbara Bensel Harrison, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, so help you God.
I will.
Do you, Barbara Bensel Harrison, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of commissioner for the County of Union, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to laws, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'll just sign all three copies, we can go back to...
Okay.
Thank you.
Jeff, yeah, thank you. How good this presentation is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No.
No?
We're continuing.
Continue with this one, yes. We adjourned the first one.
So, we're, that's right, because it's a book on the Sunday. Let's continue with our discussion.
Welcome, Harrison. This, I think, is a first for me. This, I think, is a first for me, having, in the middle of a budget presentation, to add a commissioner, so this is a new experience. So, heading back to where we were, we were talking about the fire tax rates. Are there any follow-up questions to that? The recommendation, again, go back. The increases are in the stallings in Waxaw and then in Wesley Chapel. The other rates are recommended to go down. The other funding stream on our tax rates are the emergency medical or EMS tax rate, and we're recommending that rate hold flat to prior year. And with this model, they're able to fund that 14-11 service model that's called for in our contract. They're anticipating about a little over 15,000, what they refer to as RIS, or Calls for Service, in 2019. And this budget provides about 631,000 for pre-replacement ambulances and support vehicle. And what we're finding is, in working with EMS, they're not able to remount as much as they've been able to in the past, so this funds those. Now, one of the things in our contract that we've specified is that they're not to keep, that the county can determine, with their fund balance on their side, on their ledger, above the $500,000, what to do with that. So, what we're recommending is that portion of those new ambulances be purchased, and that's why I have that $260,000 highlight there. About $260,000 of the fund balance on EMS's books to be used for capital. And this is kind of our continued strategy with EMS, that above the tax rate, if they have capital needs, that we continue to push as much of that capital to that fund balance until that fund balance is exhausted. And over the last few years, we haven't seen that exhausted. And that's primarily due, probably, to the additional revenue that they may not anticipate or that their staffing, we budget a full staffing, that they are, there's some attrition there. So, we're maximizing that tax rate and maximizing the resources, first on their books, and then any fund balance that would be on our side, which is very limited, would be applied to provide those new ambulances and other equipment. I will point out, one of the big things that we would anticipate coming next year are cardiac monitor replacements. There are about 840,000, or 840,000 this year that when they originally requested, but Phillip said they would continue to support those for another year. And if you remember, we had replaced those a couple of years ago, but the software manufacturer and the manufacturer that equipped it has changed their plan and changed how they're going to do it, so that's going to result to the county at about $840,000 cost. We didn't anticipate part of that cost to hit next year or the year after, and at that time, we will deal with that, again, trying to maximize that fund balance, as we've done in the past. But this is pretty much a continued status quo for the EMS services and funding their budget. Any other questions on EMS before I come forward with that? Okay. So, let's talk about schools. As Cindy mentioned, we received a partial transmission of the budget last week, I believe on Thursday, and we received their full budget request, which included all funding sources Monday night just before the meeting. So, we really haven't had a ton of time to kind of digest the capital list like we would and like we have in the past, or even their operating list. But so, let's talk real high level, and kind of give you the numbers as they are out of their presentation. Again, these are pretty much transcribed from the information that they provided. So, this kind of gives you a history of where the school's funding has been, back to 2015. The county provided a total of about 106 million, almost 106.6 million, all the way down to their request is $120 million. That's a 6.9% growth in, from '18 to '19, and it is almost a 10% growth going from 2015 to '19. And you can see down here, their student membership has been declining. Their peak year was in 2016, and then going down each year, so they're seeing a decrease in students. And even when you calculate in the charter school, which we don't have in this graph, but when you look at the charter school numbers for next year, the system is still going, is anticipating to decline year over year by a little less than a percent. So, we are certainly a system that probably, based on the Kibbin study and so forth, we've talked out, and now we're starting to see that descent with the maturation and the changes in our community. So, one of the things we can look at, because we haven't been able to analyze what makes up this capital number and the operating, we have been able to kind of analyze what's available as far as resources. So, in talking with the schools, we have still some refinement to do to this, but I think this is a pretty good analysis from that perspective. On the county books, we have a fund balance of about 3.1 million, and that is additional collection, overestimate from prior years, so this is sitting on the county's funds. You're by no means obligated to provide that to them, but it's collected for schools, and we've committed that we will use that all for school funding. So, we put that in the mix as a source. UCPS has a fund balance, as stated in their caper, of about 5.7 million. And if you remember back to your joint meeting in here on the 26th of April, there was a discussion about the $5.6 million fund balance that were fines and forfeiture revenues and so forth, and that they were using that money, or set aside that money for bond projects in case the bond projects ran over. So, we put that into the equation. The refund from the Monroe Electric Services, in discussions with Monroe and watching their finance committee meetings, we know that they were overbuilding Monroe High School for electric services, so Monroe's refunding back 826,000, almost $127,000. They have local fines and forfeitures.
If I could just stop for just a moment. And I did, when I spoke to the city manager about this, he indicated to me that he believed they were cutting the check today to go to the school, so it's not something that will be sent to the schools over a course of time, that it is money that they will have available to them to spend in next fiscal year.
They have the ABC revenue and the local fines and forfeitures of $700,000 and $60,000. So, when you're trying to then start from a revenue side discussion, we take the total sources against their total request, and this is their full request of 120 million. So, what is the hole, or what is the gap then that would have to be filled with that school's tax rate that would be from the county, if you choose to fully fund their request? Well, that would be about $109.7 million in translation. So, to balance, you need to add about $109 million to their other sources.
And if I could talk a little bit about the note that's at the bottom of this particular slide. As the board will recall, when we had our joint meeting, the schools put forward a recommendation as it related to dealing with counselors, mental health individuals to be contained within their schools, and the price tag associated with that proposal was $1.6 million. In response to the comments that were made by the Board of County Commissioners at that particular meeting, Michelle Lancaster and her staff reached out to the Board of Education, School Board, and did have one meeting with the superintendent, superintendent, yes, as well as some of the staff, and began the dialogue as it related to what does that comprehensive look, look like. I think there's another meeting that may be occurring at 11 o'clock today, based upon our request for follow-up, because when their budget was submitted to us, even after that meeting, we did not see any change in their proposal. So, what your staff is recommending is that that $1.6 million be put in a reserve fund, that the dialogue continue as to what is the correct model, between the county, the schools, bring in the sheriff, bring in the hospital, bring in all the stakeholders to make the determination as to what is the appropriate model to address the needs that have been identified. And once that model has been agreed to by both this board and the Board of Education, then at that point in time, those monies would be released to whichever agency was appropriate, once that determination is made. But we believe we do not have enough information at this point in time to provide those monies to the schools and to support their recommendation or their request.
And I'll point out that this funding doesn't include the SROs. So, the immediacy of some of the safety issues around the SROs are included in the general fund budget, so it's an additional 10 SROs. I think that'd make 29, if I remember right. 29 or 30 SROs then in the system. And also, the VDA's, which you approved a budget amendment on Monday night, that's roughly $1.2 million, which will allow those SROs to be used over equipment in all of the schools and be able to achieve that.
And those will be installed this summer.
Right. So, this is by no means a recommendation that we slow that process. It's kind of a longer-term strategic approach to how we address that. Is there any questions about the school funding? We, at this point, I think we need a little bit of direction as to where you, where you have particular interest, where you want us to spend some time looking at the schools. You've heard presentation from the schools and the superintendent, and this is the one last piece of our budget we really haven't talked about extensively. So, do you have any additional direction for us, or questions that you'd like us to follow up on at this point?
What's the tax rate to fund that?
The tax rate to fund 109.7 is about 42 cents.
And the school's tax rate is currently what?
Forty-four and a half.
So, they would, that would mean a 2.5 cent tax reduction on their side.
On both the county and the school side?
For a total of five cents, yes, for your residents.
I bet you can, I mean, we can lower the tax rate five cents, won't you say?
If you were to make the decision to use the school's fund balance for capital projects, and to use the monies that they receive from the city of Monroe, which was unexpected one-time revenue, that yes, it would mean a total of five cents tax reduction to the taxpayers of Union County.
I think we might have a conclusion all done.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sir.
The 1.6 million relative to the most.
That is, that would be set aside, so that monies would be in the budget.
So, it's not included in those figures above?
No, sir. It would be set aside so that it would be assigned once that decision's made.
Not part of the budget yet, is what you're saying.
Well, it's, it is part of, it's there.
It's there. Well, you wouldn't include it in their current expense funding yet. So, at, in discussion, that 109 number would fund the 106, and you wouldn't have to come back later and fund the 106. It's already included, so if you.
The 1.6.
I'm sorry, the 1.6. So, if you were to say, as Commissioner, Commissioner Hales mentioned, the 2.5 cent tax reduction, you would still fund the 1.6 within that 42 cent tax rate.
Unclear. Thank you very much.
But it would be put in a reserve and not available for use, yes?
I understand that.
Okay.
That's a motion.
Okay. And I won't say anything else.
Would you like to restate your motion, Mr. Raitt?
I make a motion that we accept the, this budget request to cut the tax rate 2.5 cents.
It may be beneficial for more to, or include it further along in the budget process to make the final budget decision on the rate.
We don't have to make a final decision, but I suggest we direct staff to continue on this path.
I say that because the county manager mentioned that she does not have a tremendous amount of time to analyze the school's budget at this point, but I think we'd do a qualification.
I think what Mr. Crook is trying to say, very politically correct, is that there are, once we actually are able to evaluate their needs versus their request, there may be additional areas you all may want to contemplate.
Well, consider it direction, then, and I believe that you need to continue on this path.
Okay.
And I'll put that in form of a motion.
Okay. Then, discussion on that motion. Commissioner Bush?
And I want to support that, that motion. If we can do, if we can use the funding that's here and meet their needs that they've asked for, I think that we need to go ahead and go in that direction. You know, what we've seen in recent days that gives me great concern is the weaponization of the school economy. And, you know, I'm very concerned with the direction that administrators at Union County Public Schools have taken with regards to our state budget, and if that's the intention, then we need to be very careful in what we do. And I, this gives me the ability to go as a school board liaison and talk to the school board members and have discussions with them in this regards, and I, I think that's what we need to start doing with them, and explaining the use of the money, the money that wasn't expected to be there, and then if we need to adjust next year, we can, but it does give me some ground to stand on top of them.
And part of the philosophy, the school board in the past has not had a fund balance like they identified this year. And the reason is, is because we've always kind of, we've been their backstop. So, if they have emergencies that they need funded, they've always had the ability to come to this board, and I don't know that this board has ever turned down their request if they truly, they have a boiler or something like that go out. And as it relates to their capital improvement program, back in December, you saw a lot of movement from what the voters originally approved versus after they went back and looked at those projects as to where monies needed to be allocated to. I would tell you what, the standard to which you hold us is that if you give us a budget for a capital program, that's the budget we work with. But if, in fact, that they did come upon something that needed to be addressed, they always have the ability to come to the county, and we really do service that fund balance.
Commissioner Hales?
I agree with Commissioner Hales, and I will support that, but I do want to make the statement that we kind of set this up ourselves. We used the 44.5, and what I remember, the initial budget came, and they spent every penny of the 44.5, or at least they proposed spending. And maybe we need to relook how we communicate what they had to go, you know. They need to give us a budget of what their needs are, or what expectations are, not because of what, what tax dollars.
The superintendent did reach out to me. I don't know if any of the board members reached out to, to you, but, and I told them, I said, I do not believe that it is within my purview to provide you with a tax rate. I said, all I would tell you is, you need to identify what your needs are, and that is what you need to present as part of your budget to the Board of County Commissioners.
But I think they emptied the bag.
And that was the same communication with their finance offices from our offices. I'm very conscious of what happened last year, that discussion. So, we never gave them a tax rate, and we echo this, and you need to request what your needs are.
The board members in conversation I have had, their expectation is they have 44.5, and, you know, that's where the budget came in. I'm just saying, we need to clarify this time. We haven't necessarily done that in the past, and make sure it's an understanding. We raised taxes considerably after the roof fiasco in the court, and, you know, they don't have that anymore. All their roofs have been certified as functional, thanks to Mr. Raitt, and so, you know, there's probably a little more can be had there, too, to be honest with you.
Well, we will continue our work in evaluating the question and bringing that forward as part of the manager's recommended question.
And I would say, I know that, and I like to look forward, not back, but I do know that as part of those discussions that Richard referred to back, back previously, that we did visit with the Board of Education about a funding formula and had that discussion, there was no interest at that time to move to a funding formula, and so, this, this may have been misconceived as a, as a funding formula. When we went to the, is it bifurcated? Is that correct?
It's a little bigger than bifurcated these days. We started calling it.
That's probably.
Qualificated.
Yeah.
But this is one of my different.
But we, but we are meeting their complete budget request.
This, this funds everything they've asked for.
Funds every single thing that the schools have asked for, with, and even, and even.
Sets aside the money for.
Sets aside the money for the things, even though we may be able to get some funding from the state for that.
Yes, sir.
So, again, we're, we're funding what they've asked for.
Yes, sir.
And that, and that's clear, because I do want to be very clear, this, this school board has been excellent to work with. Everything that we've asked them, they cut, they used existing capital money last year to offset their bond costs. They have given, they have worked with us, and this is by no means, if anything the school board has done, I, I have some very big concerns about some of the administrative moves lately, but the school board has been excellent to work with, and I commend them on what they've done, and I think this just helps us. They depend on their administrators like we depend on our administrators, and I believe that they, that this does give me some ability to go top of them, and I appreciate that.
Any further discussion? In the interest of correctness, Clerk, would you read the motion?
The one that Mr.
Commissioner Hales made, or revised?
His motion wants to direct staff to continue on this path.
By clear on the motion? Quite clear on the motion? All in favor, say aye. No, there's none.
Okay. So with that, here's what's kind of remaining for you in the process. Cindy mentioned now, as in this meeting, we've had 16 meetings related to budgets going all the way back to Halloween last year. So we have, and I should have taken that one off, we are not going to be doing that presentation on Monday, next Monday night. The June 1st manager will provide, or earlier will provide to you the final submission of the recommended FY 2019 operating capital budget that would fulfill the statutory requirement. After that, we'll be looking at June 11th for the operating capital budget public hearing, which gets over to that hurdle, and then with the June 1 submission date after June 11, at the board's pleasure, they may adopt the, may adopt by any time after that. There's a 10-day waiting period required after submission, but the deadline will then clear that up for you. So these are the required dates in the process, and of course, we have some time built in. Then if you need additional information or how you like to approach that, we'll be happy to take any direction there. But this is kind of what's left for you to do to get to the 2019 adoption.
Other questions? Have a manager?
No, sir. That is all we have for you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'd like to, again, take the opportunity to welcome Ms. Harrison to the board.
Thank you.
I just noticed that these four, including myself, tend to get a little wordy, so don't hesitate to speak. Jump, jump right in.
Never been shy.
Welcome you to the board. With nothing further, I will offer a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.